Unless there's an objection from anybody, we'll just include that in and let's approve the minute subject to including those comments.
All right.
Any further discussion on the minutes? On the motion? Everybody, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're into old business, Lockridge Estates. And the discussion, that's one of the ones that we got to. We talked about that. Does anybody have any questions on Lockridge Estates? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Lockridge Estates, tracks A and A1, final plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kristi and Mark, one and two, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wall subdivision, tracks one and two, final plat. Now, do we need to act on the variance request? Let's get a motion for adoption.
Well, can we have Van explain why we make questions?
The wall subdivision is a two lot final plat that was formerly known as church subdivision. The applicant has not provided, yeah, the applicant has provided the necessary notification for the variance request, which is that they not have to dedicate the five feet of right away on the master road plan. The staff is supportive of that variance and the recommendation would be approval of the variance and the subdivision based on approval of the variance.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the variance request.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on the approval of the variance? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, on the approval of the final plat, is there a motion? Including the variance?
I move to approve the plat with the variance.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Has the driveway permit been obtained?
They're not ready to start construction yet.
When they, they'll be required to get the driveway permit when they...
But that is part of the preliminary plat?
It's a part of the approval that they have to get that, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, we're into new business, the Nickerson family exclusion. Van, you want to explain that?
Yes, this is a, it's hard to see, but, oh, there it is. You see the family exclusion there on the wall? This property, they've met all the requirements for their family exclusion, which includes sewer being provided by the rightful municipal system. Staff recommends approval is filed.
Any further discussion, I mean, any further questions of staff? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Nickerson family exclusion.
Second.
Kristi and Mark, no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sanders family exclusion.
Yes, this family exclusion meets the ordinance standard for approval. Staff recommends approval is filed.
Any further discussion on the motion? Or is there a motion yet?
I'll move to...
Make a motion. You go.
All right, Tricia and Mark, seconds. On the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Webb Estates, Lot 1, final plat. Van?
Yes, this, this final plat, it's a one lot final plat, and the applicant has requested a variance for length-to-width ratio, which is greater than four to one. The applicant did not meet the standard for notification requirement. Staff recommends deferral until the June meeting, subject to the applicant providing the necessary notification.
Mr. Chairman, I move we defer to next month's meeting.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question of staff?
Sure.
So, on the length-to-width ordinance, so, if it was like, you know, one mile and four miles, would that be the same problem, or is there a sort of...
Well, that would be, yes, technically, if it's greater than four to one, you know, length is more than four times the width. So, it's really a design standard because in, when you start getting much more than that, you have many places in the county, down by the river especially, where you have, somebody will have 40 feet frontage on the river and it'll be a quarter mile long, you know, or, and then it just, it's not, it's, it's a service delivery issue too, because it's just a porters lot sign. And so, this is, it's close enough to the four to one standard, it's not like that. You know, it's not like, you know, so long and so narrow that it's not a feasible lot. So, but that's another matter, because they didn't get the notice out there in the first place.
Is that, is that in our regs?
Yeah, that's the variance request, is to exceed the length-to-width four to one ratio.
Based on Mark's comment, would that be something that ought to be considered in terms of changing our...
No.
I don't think it's...
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance. We're glad that it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, no, I mean, when I talk about changing, I'm talking about one mile to four miles.
Well, that would be over 10 acres.
Yeah, it would be greater than acres. But there are, there are lots, like I said, down by the river and other places where people want access to something at the end and they, they, they weren't legally subdivided first off, so, and/or they were subdivided before there was even a subdivision ordinance. So, going forward, we, it's a good standard to have, just like with double frontage lots, the variance doesn't always need to be denied, but it needs to be considered as a lot design characteristic.
Thank you, sir.
We're on Webb Estates, right? On Olson...
Yes.
Olson.
Now, we're on Olson.
Are we on the Olson?
You made a...
That was a deferral.
Oh, we already...
So, now we're...
Yeah, we already voted on that?
Yeah.
On the Webb, we own the Olson estate.
Yeah, we voted on Webb, so now we're...
We're on Olson, okay.
So, you made, so the, we're gonna file.
Yeah, I couldn't, couldn't recall. All right, Olson Estates, Van?
Yes, this, this is a two lot final plat, you see up there, and the only comment the staff would have is they'll need to require, they'll need to get a driveway permit when they construct. Staff recommends approval as filed, subject to that comment.
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Move for approval? Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Hey Dexter, how you doing?
I'm here. Don't you sneak in. Well, actually, I was over across the street waiting for you guys.
Let me tell you, we can walk back together, because I parked over there too.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion then on the Olson Estates? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have, motion carries. All right, back to now the Madden Estates. We have discussed that. Do any, one member of the commission have any questions of staff?
Well, can, can you go over just the basics of the...
Yes, this is a, the four lot, the request is four lot preliminary plat that you see on the screen over there. At this point, the staff does not have perk approval for the lots, and we do not have a letter from the volunteer fire department saying that they can add the right service. They requested a variance on the, on the right-of-way dedication, but the, I think, but the notice has not been added, so the staff recommends a deferral until, until the June meeting.
All right, is there a motion then, or do we...
I'll make a motion to defer.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Just a second, we gotta get a motion. A motion, I think...
I'll make a motion to defer this to the next meeting.
Motion made, is there a second to the deferral?
Conditions.
Kristi?
I'll second.
Okay, Kristi, seconded. Now, we're in discussion. Any member of the commission? Okay, the audience, if you got a question, come ahead and again, state your name, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm David Lackey. Well, I want to know is, how much land do you have to have for septic tank to work? If you can tell me, maybe...
I think it's minimum of one acre if you don't have public water.
One acre?
If you have well water, it's got to at least be an acre, but beyond that, even if it is more than an acre, if it doesn't perk, it won't matter. It won't work as that configured lot, they'd have to do something else.
Do, is there something else they do? I mean...
They have to change the design of the lot to make it large enough so that you can keep the field lines on the property and perk it.
They could do one of those high dollar aerobic...
Or you could do a package plant that probably exceeds the value of the lot, or maybe, maybe could, but it is possible, but you still have to get it approved by the health department.
At least one acre, right? That's what you'd say?
Yes, if you don't have public water.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
If it doesn't perk, is the minimum three acres, or does it just matter?
It's not a minimum after that.
If the health department will approve the system...
Yeah, if we could, if you want to make a comment, feel free, but let's come to the microphone.
Sure, Fred Rogers, if you have a, if you have a treatment plant, which is different than a septic tank, and it actually does some treatment, you have to be 275 feet from the neighbor, from the property lot, and it, it can, leeches out onto, you put...
Put it on the ground.
You put canna lilies out there and succulent plants, and it, so you can do it a different way, but it still, it has to be a pretty big lot to do that. So, you can, if you don't pass the percs, you can, there are alternatives.
We appreciate it. Let me, one thing I understand too, that if, if, if these things that we defer till the next meeting, if they're not addressed between now and the next meeting, they fall off the agenda, don't they?
Unless they request deferral again.
Unless they request, yeah. And the staff in discussion today was gonna talk, we were gonna talk about the fact that we feel like, you know, there are gonna be some variances relative to right-of-way because of the legal opinion we've gotten from this county attorney in the interim before we ever address any kind of change. So, if people ask for a variance, there are likely to be a variance on most agendas, and the staff feels like they ought to get one deferral. And if they don't get it done after the second month, then far as we're concerned, we don't want to see it continue on there for them not ever, you know, meeting that notice requirement.
Is that, is that written anywhere?
No, that's the staff's, that's the staff's recommendation to the board.
Right, well, I, I think it's a good recommendation, but I also think that there's somehow the applicant ought to be notified that they have one bite at the apple, so to speak.
Is that a change to our bottom line?
No, no, we just know that there's gonna be, well, you can see, we have three or four on this agenda. If you don't get your business done, then you're gonna have to be deferred one time. And we think if you can't get it done two times, maybe you might not ever get it done. I don't know.
So, would they just submit a new application? Start at the beginning?
Yes, they just start over at another time if they can't get it done.
Would it be appropriate for us to act on that recommendation?
Yeah, you could, you could vote to, you know, to support the staff's recommendation on that, if that's, I was gonna be a discussion, I and we ain't got to it yet.
What would do that like in other businesses?
Yeah, that's what the staff recommendation we were gonna talk about.
That's fine.
Let me say one more thing.
Sure.
Okay, now, we're doing all this stuff, myself, I'm just talking to myself, when will we know when to come back, when not to come back, when they're gonna write us a letter, or do they pick up the phone, call us, or what are we doing?
I'll tell you exactly.
Some of us got a letter, the others didn't.
Well, if you don't get a letter telling you when it is, it's not gonna happen, because they've missed it again. You see what I'm saying? If you don't get it, the next meeting will be June the 28th, 2:30, across the street.
Across?
Across from City Hall, it's at Jeffrey Hawkins Conference Room, where Metro Plin is. That's where our normal meeting was.
But we'll, we'll get a letter, for sure.
You should, if the, if the applicant does what they're supposed to do, if you don't get it, it'll still be on the agenda, but it's gonna fail, because we're gonna say, it's not gonna go forward, because they're gonna, they're not gonna be able to meet the notice requirements two months in a row.
You know, on the June the 28th, you think we need to be here just to find out yea or nay?
If you want to talk about it.
Best way to, best way to ensure that you don't, if something hadn't gotten by and, you know, the mailman made a mistake, or something happened, it'd be to, now, we do publish the agenda, don't we, prior to the meeting?
It's on our website, like a week before, before the meeting, like around the 21st or something, it'll be on our website, and you can look and see if it's on there. But it's gonna be on there unless they ask us to take it off.
Well, it breaks, I would say too, I mean, you know the person who's put this in, it's Mr. Madden, obviously, certainly reach out to him. I'm happy to give them my letter from their consultant. I mean, I would just reach out and call Nick and say, hey, we want to know what's going on, can we have a meeting or something?
Do you mind having me?
Please.
Thank you, man. I appreciate the help.
Sure.
I mean, it's not a secret, I mean, people can, you can get together with the applicant and say, hey, we know this is happening, let us know what's going on.
Well, for me, this is the first time this has ever happened to me, so I just don't know what to ask and what not to ask, when to be here, when not to be here, but like I say, I'll be here next time. We might not bring it up, but you'll see me here next time, for sure.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
I don't want to miss nothing.
Just to be clear, we're gonna be back in the Jeffrey Hawkins building?
Correct.
So, that's across Broadway, right across from City Hall?
Right over there, right across the street from City Hall, Little Rock City Hall.
Casey, pick again. You were talking about maybe the applicant had to fill out a new application for the planning and all that. How does that affect people that have already bought the property in that situation?
Well, I would get together with the person that's in charge of doing all this.
Yes, sir.
And make sure that you and your sister's name are put on the plat as owners, because you have to execute, you have to approve the same plat that he's proposing, so make sure everybody's legal's right and all the rest of it. And, and also, in order to get your business done, I would stay on him to make sure he gets the notice to the neighbors out there in the appropriate time.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Sure. I think we're back to the motion to defer, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Any other comments from the commission? All in favor of the motion to defer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're at the Smith Edition.
Well, there's actually a final plat you need to vote for.
I took, I took that as both, but we'll go ahead and get...
Yeah, you probably need to vote it.
I vote to defer Madden Estates lots one through four, final plat, to your next month's meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, Mark and Tricia, on the motion?
I think it was Kristi.
Kristi.
Kristi, oh, I'm sorry, Kristi, I didn't... Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, I do want to ask one thing about this, since the lots were sold before the final plat, does that mean there's a penalty imposed upon...
There will be if he doesn't do what he's supposed to do. We'll, we'll have to take him to court, and those people that have bought the lots, they're hung in the balance.
We're gonna give him a chance to make it right.
Give him a chance to make it right.
Thank you.
And a little encouragement, I'm sure wouldn't hurt, from the ownership. All right, any further discussion on the motion for the final plat on Madden Estates? All in favor to defer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Y'all are welcome to stay, or, you know, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Uh-huh. Smith Edition, Van?
Yes, this is a four lot subdivision.
No, one lot.
Um, wait.
Where's it going all here?
Smith Edition, one lot. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong file. Got hung, so to speak, in the Madden subdivision.
Well, I know we're gonna meet here next time, but I see two screens on either side, and I see a little bit of, well, not a little bit of square, but it's, you know, somewhat hard for us to see the...
They have technical issues here.
I see, okay.
And we've had them over there too. Hopefully, our, we're in good shape, but we'll see.
Okay.
It's not our building. It is our building, but technically it's not.
We were close to not having a PowerPoint presentation at all.
Yeah. So, we're happy we got something, you know?
Just out of curiosity, why are we here?
Because we've been removed from our normal location by the election.
Oh, okay.
That we're always second, the planning board is second to the election commission.
Point of, point of public privilege, and everybody who hasn't voted, please vote.
There you go.
We've got seven, seven o'clock, I believe, or is it seven or seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. All right, back to Smith Edition, Lot 1, final plat.
Yes, this, this is a one lot final plat, Nichols Loop, and the applicant has met all the ordinance requirements to recommend approval, with the exception of notice of, giving notice to them that they have to have a driveway permit from Road Bridge, but subject to that, county recommends the planning board recommend approval is filed.
Do I have a motion? I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Tommy and Dexter, any further discussion?
I do have one thing. About the Plasky County Road and Bridge, there are a bunch of these today?
Yes.
Is there something going on with the county?
Yes, the, the Road and Bridge Department has lately encountered a lot of unpermitted driveways, and the Road and Bridge Department requires either a concrete or corrugated metal driveway culvert, and a lot of these driveways are popping up with plastic culverts in there. So, as, just to help Road and Bridge out, we put this in, this is gonna be a boilerplate comment going forward, that any new driveway has to contact Road and Bridge, so, you know, Road and Bridge is making them tear some of these out, just to put the proper material in.
So, the way it works is a point of information, the applicant has to pay for it, and the Road and Bridge installs it. So, the applicant pays for whatever design and size pipe is necessary for their right, for their driveway, and the Road and Bridge Department installs it to make sure it goes in there right, so we don't have block ditches and drainage. So, it's a good thing for everybody, it's just they need to do it, and they don't want plastic.
But this is also a requirement, isn't it? They have to contact Road and Bridge as part of the preliminary plat?
Well, not necessarily. We require that as part of our addressing process.
Yes.
Our 911 address, or when they, when he gets an address request, he asks if they have gotten a driveway permit.
Okay, has that happened here? Okay.
Well, not on this particular application, because they're not, they haven't asked for an address yet.
Okay.
Just doing their lot.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on the motion?
Who made the motion, Van?
I think Tommy made it and Dexter seconded.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on the motion to approve, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Our motion carries. Rushing acres.
Two lot final plat, same comment, both lots have existing septic systems. The applicant needs to obtain a driveway permit from the County Road and Bridge for any new driving, driveways on Burlingame Road, subject to that, staff recommends approval is filed.
Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Dexter moves, Tommy seconds. Any discussion on the motion?
Does Lot 2 have access to the road, or is this an easement on the far?
There is an easement on the west side.
On the access, yeah.
You can see it.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't, I, I didn't see that far. So, on that existing road, or is it just that, that sliver down the road?
Legally, it's the sliver, but they will most likely use the existing driveway.
Okay. All right.
On the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Brookstone Edition, we'll take both preliminary, we'll take them individually, preliminary plat, Van? Brookstone Edition, lots one, two, four.
Yes, yes. This, this is a four lot preliminary plat, and we still have yet to receive approval letters from Mama Water and the Volunteer, West Plasky Volunteer Fire Department. Lots one and two have double frontage, and I mentioned earlier, and the applicant has provided no access restriction on the south property lines one and two, and that's the variance that they're requesting, is that allow the double frontage on lots one and two. Staff is supportive of that due to the winding nature of Highway 300, but the, the recommendation would be for deferral, in that the applicant has not provided...
Yeah, they, no, they, they provided the notification.
They did. Oh, yes. Yes, they did have, they do have the right, they do have it. And they have met the requirement for notification, I'm sorry. And also, obtain a driveway permit from our dot since Highway 300 is a state highway.
Question by any member of the commission?
What's the issue with the double frontage on those things?
Well, that's another design characteristic we were talking about, so that we typically don't want lots that are greater than one, four to one length-to-width, and we don't want lots with double frontage. We've had some, occasionally we had some, like with the hillside, where there's a meandering right-of-way, like there is, there was some in Waterview Estates, there's a couple over there, down there by the lake, and this is the same way in 300 kinda, the...
Hairpin turn.
It's a hairpin turn, you can see where it goes up there. So, those two lots would take access off of 300, and we just want to make sure they don't take access off of, off of 300 on the north and not on the south. And they've agreed to do that, and you see, they have a, they're dedicating a right-of-way, and they have a prohibition of access along the south line, southeast lines of Lot 1 and 2.
Is that just for uniformity, that adjacent lots come out to the road in the same place, or...
Well, it's probably just not a good location to put a, to put a, they're gonna have double frontage, we want them to come out on one side, not both sides. You know, we want them to come out on the north side there, 300, I guess, where the other, the other two lots will take access. Everybody will take access on the north side of 300. So, it just so happens that these two, one and two, well, one, two barely touches it, but one is mostly has frontage on 300 twice, Lot 2 has a little bit. But the applicant has met the notice requirements, and staff is satisfied that they're doing the right thing by, you know, creating one access point rather than an access point on both sides of lots.
Additional questions? Do we have a motion for, do we have a motion for approval on the preliminary plat, Brookstone Edition?
I just, I do have a question, I'm sorry. I appreciate that recommending deferral because of not meeting notification requirements, but why not for not having the approval letters? Why are those not ranked as high with staff?
Well, it's, if, if they don't provide the approval letters, they don't have a lot, as far as we're concerned. They're not gonna sign the plat. It's the same, it's the same thing always, we're trying to, what we want to do is expedite the process if possible, and in this case, by recommending approval of subject two, we're expediting the process unless they don't come up with the goods. If they can't get the letter, or they don't get the perk, then they don't get approval, and so they're back to square one. If they get it next week, they can move on with their business.
I just wonder, is that a lot of a burden on the staff to have to keep up with these?
Well, look at, look at it this way, we've already got three or four items already gonna be deferred to the June meeting. If y'all defer this one, then it's another possible 10 or 12 item docket, when we don't necessarily have to have it.
And it extends the development or the ability to build on your house, or transact a property sale, if you do it legally, by another month, when we don't think it's necessary to have a month. If the board is satisfied to approve the variance, and the staff takes into consideration of what they need to have in order for us to execute the plat, then we can move on. we can move on. If not, then we just hold up the process.
We're back to asking for a motion on the variance, and then if we get to variance, then we'll go to the preliminary plat. Do I have a motion on the variance?
I moved to approve the variance request.
Mark motion, Tommy seconds. Now, we're still in discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now that I have a motion to adopt the preliminary plat, as the variance has been approved, is there a motion?
Moved to approve the preliminary plat, subject to staff requirements.
Is there a second? Tommy seconds. Any further discussion? On the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, we're at Brookstone Edition, Lots One through Four, final plat. Is there any additional staff comments on that?
Same as before. We need water approval from the Momo Water Department, and the variance approval for the double lot, double frontage lots, and of course, the Volunteer Fire Department. We can't approve the preliminary plat, we have that, but we wouldn't approve the final plat unless we had that on, so we'll make that a point.
I'm assuming we need to deal with the variance on the final plat, so is there a motion to adopt or approve the variance?
Moved to approve the variance request.
Second.
Second. Second.
Second by Dexter. Mike approves the, Mark rather, I'm sorry, approves the, or made the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's adopted. All right, let's go to...
Moved to approve the final plat.
Motion made to approve the final plat. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Patricia seconded it, made by Mark. All in favor, unless there's any discussion?
I was just wondering, Mr. Chairman, I know this is the final plat to the preliminary plat we just approved. I just, I wanted to make a comment that I don't believe that, in my opinion, this is the way the subdivision ordinance code was supposed to be followed. I just, I just feel like it's being rushing, rushing it through, and I feel like a government rubber stamper. And so, I just feel like these are, having a preliminary plat and a final plat back to back, just seems a little rushed. Just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded that the final plat be approved. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Hilson Edition.
Yes, this is two lot final plat.
Looks like you got two variances.
Yes, that's correct. This final plat has two variances, length and width, because of the way that narrower lot is drawn there on the north, and a right-of-way dedication variance. It looks like we have the, we have the right notification, and the staff recommends approval, subject to both variances being approved and the additional requirement of, additional requirement of the Road and Bridge permit for driveway.
All right, we need to deal, any other, any questions from the commission?
So, the septic is not?
We have it.
We have that, and all those other things. Twenty-four, twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-one?
Thirty-three and thirty-nine.
Yeah, they're varying.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, this seems like a kind of thin lot. Why should we approve that variance? I mean, why are y'all not concerned about it, I should say?
Well...
We'll let the applicant represent it.
All right, and please identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Foster. I represent the Hilson Edition. The reason for Lot One, it's going to be added to the parcel of property to the north. So, this is a separate tract of land. When we split the piece in two, therefore, we have two lots. They want to keep the northern piece. That's why it's so small. It'll become the northern tract of that land is owned by the developers, and if that single lot will be added to their home site.
So, that'll come before us later to?
You're talking about this one, Scott?
No.
They own this one. So, they're going to add this to?
They're going to add that to that, yes. And because it was a separate tract, we had to do a subdivision per county road.
Okay. Van, did you have a further explanation?
No, I mean, they don't, they won't have to do anything with the plat. They found the plat as one lot. They're just saying they're going to keep it as a part or addition to the existing tract to the north, and they can do that, but they have to subdivide it in order to sell the larger piece off.
Correct.
That's your, that's your intent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, I was just asking another question. If they came back and wanted to sell the northern, is there any point that they're going to have to combine that northern tract, or that small lot with the northern tract?
Well, they might. If they wanted to sell it, they would have a meets and bounds and a subdivision, subdivided lot as part of the sale.
Correct. They would be selling it in fee title under two separate descriptions. It'd have a meets and bounds tract for the parcel of the north, and then a subdivision lot of Lot One to the south. So, it'd be combined on their day.
Okay. Any other questions by any member of the commission? Do you want to take these variances separate? Let's just do that, so we can be clear on it. Do I have a motion on the, what is it, the four to one, if you want to put it that way?
I moved to approve the variance on the four to one ratio.
Is there a second? Tommy seconds. Mark made the motion. Any comments on that from the commission, on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, now let's take the second variance. Make sure we understand what we're going on the second one. I knew the length of wheel on the first one. The second one is?
Is the requirement of not dedicate additional five feet of right-of-way on the master road plan.
All right. Do I have a motion on that variance?
Moved to approve the variance.
I'll second that.
Patricia seconded it. Mark made the motion. Any discussion on the second variance on the five feet dedication? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, we'll have a motion on the Hilson Edition, Lots One and Two, final plat, with both variances having been approved. Do I have a motion on that? Tommy makes the motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by who? Mark?
Mark.
Okay, Mark seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The number 12 is the property of Lawrence Heights, Lots One and Two, final plat. Van?
Yes, it's a two lot final plat. The applicant has requested, or is not willing to dedicate the additional five feet of right-of-way, and they're also not willing to request a variance for it, and they did not supply notice, so they're 0-3 on that. And so, I mean, that's a prerogative. The staff would recommend deferral at best. They also need to provide a, or be aware that they have to get driveway permit for Road and Bridge and for their new driveway. So, the staff would recommend deferral, and subject to our new, or if we adopt our new policy. I have a feeling this one's not going to go anywhere, because they don't appear to be interested in requesting a variance.
I'm assuming the applicant is not here.
We are.
You're here?
Yes.
You want to come tell us, because it looks like you're climbing up a hill and may not be able to reach it. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
I'm Zane Robbins with Central Arcs Engineering, and we don't want to request a variance, and we would like clarification on what a variance is, because we don't want y'all to come back and get the extra five feet if we get the variance.
Let me, let me say that if you don't get a variance, you're not going to get an approval. And that would mean that you would be out of compliance with the planning commission, and there could be some sanctions. Van, you want to explain?
Well, if you want to transact the property without the subdivision, you'll be violating the subdivision ordinance. So, you can, I think that your concern may be misfounded, because if you get the plat approved with the variance, and you record the plat, that's the end of it. I don't care what the county wants to do in the future, they're not going to come back and do anything.
So, are you telling me that that additional five feet that you're requesting, at some point in time, if you came in and said you wanted to put in a water line in that five feet, and the fences and everything that's inside, outside of that five feet, who's going to be responsible for it? I just don't want you to come back at a later date, acquire that five feet without compensating me.
Yeah, I understand. I'll let the county attorney speak to that piece back there in the back.
I thought I was going to get away with it. Oh, no. I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem if there's an exception clause put in there in the variance, that if you come in and require that piece of property, because that's an additional acre all the way down that line, and I don't want to be the person that sets a precedent out there in that neighborhood. And that's basically what would happen if I, if I were to set that variance.
So, the variance process exists?
We all know who you are, but let's make sure the records.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam Fulgham, Plasky County Attorney. The ordinance for the subdivision, the subdivision code is authorized by ordinance. The ordinance requires, under the county's master street plan, that there be appropriate dedication of land from the center line of the road to the edge to accommodate a 60-foot right-of-way. So, it'd be a half-street, so it'd be 30 feet from the center line. I'm going to guess that this is a 50-foot county road. Is that right, Van?
Mm-hmm.
So, in order to avoid that five feet, right now, you ask for a variance in order to go through the process without dedicating that additional five feet. If at some point in the future the county decides it needs that additional five feet, it's going to buy it from you.
Okay, I don't have a problem. As long as that's in.
That's constitutional law, so unless we amend the...
You're still being litigated, right?
Unless we, unless we amend both the federal and state constitution, and the county would have to buy it.
That's as long as you get the variance.
If we approve the variance. Right.
Any other, y'all have any other questions? Because what we're, what we're going to talk about, now we haven't done it yet, but you have, since you haven't done the things that need to be done to ask for the variance, the likelihood is that we will probably defer to the next meeting. If it's not done by the next meeting, there's a discussion going on that it'll be dropped from the agenda. So, we hadn't made that rule, but we certainly want to cooperate with y'all the best we can, if y'all are interested in, we will say, addressing some of the issues that we've discussed here today.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Please answer my questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, do we have a motion? I don't think there's a motion to defer.
Moved to defer.
I'll second that.
Patricia, Mark makes the motion. Patricia seconded it. Any discussion on the motion to defer? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Noble Road Estates, Lots One and Two, final plat. Van?
Yes, this is a, it's a two lot plat in a U shape, in essence. It's the out parcel, so to speak, is the center parcel, so it's Lots One and Two. There's a house on One and vacant on Lot Two. Opposed Lot Two. Staff would advise the applicant to obtain the driveway permit from the County Road and Bridge on any new driveways on Noble Road, and recommends approvals filed.
What happens if they, is there any, at any point, does the driveway permit, and where do they get that?
They get it from Rowan Bridge Department.
Okay, do they ever refuse? Have you ever seen a refusal?
Well, they might. If they don't agree on, I mean, I guess if somebody said, "I'd like a driveway," and they said, "Okay, here's your, we'll give you a permit if you put an eight-inch steel, or 12-inch steel pipe," and they said, "No, I don't want to do it," then the county wouldn't give them the driveway permit.
Yeah.
So, that'll just happen. But the beauty of it is, if you, if you can get the standard and meet the agreement with the Public Works Road and Bridge Department, then the county will install it for you for free. So, that's a pretty good thing, I think. Saves you some money, and that's the end of it, anyway.
Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion? Tommy moves. We approve Noble Road Estates, Lots One and Two, final plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Dexter seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Other business? Is there any other business? Not hearing any other business. We'll move on to chairman communications, and I've got about 45 minutes worth of comments, if anybody wants to relax.
I'll check.
I'm not even going to call for a vote on that. I'm just going to move on to staff communications. I get the sense of the commission. Staff communications?
Yes. A couple of things. The one that I've already mentioned is to do your automatic deferral, so to speak, for the first request on the, this is a right-of-way variance request until such time as we change the ordinance to make it, so that you don't have to do a variance. So, at this point, you still do, unless sometime, we're giving the applicant the option to request a variance or not, either to dedicate the right-of, if they don't want to dedicate the right-of-way, they have to request a variance. And the reason that we are doing this is because the county attorney has opined that, due to case law, that in most instances, they don't have to dedicate the right-of-way. Most, certainly if there's a large-scale subdivision, or there's circumstances such as a turn lane, or, you know, some traffic configuration or signal or something, they might have to dedicate the right-of-way. But in general, like a two lot, like most of these that you saw today, they just would request a variance until we change the ordinance to say that they don't, and that's it. And so, our position is if we're going to give them that variance, we want them to step up and notify their neighbors. It's kind of a pro forma, you know, requirements, it's something they have to do. It's not that hard, and they do the, you know, the way the notice requirement is now, at least. So, it's not that hard, so they can do the notice and get it approved. And the staff will recommend approval, subject to the county attorney's opinion. So, it's pretty simple. And we think one deferral's enough. Otherwise, it can be going on for months, you know? And then I think, you know, if the, if the board feels similarly, then they could, they could advise the staff that that's a policy that will work until something else comes along.
Let me ask one question, if I could. What, if the county has plans to widen the road, and we start, you know, getting ready to move in that direction, we have something like the gentleman here that has, you know, a lot of right-of-way. I mean, there's a fairness issue as well as a cost issue for the county. Does that come into play at all?
Well, it could, but the county doesn't build any roads, so we'd be requiring, we'd be acquiring right-of-way for future road construction that would probably be required of a developer or something, or maybe a bond issue, or the city annexes it, and then they will, you know? But at some point, their right-of-way would need to be there to do it. And, but unless we have a nexus that allows us to take that right-of-way for free, we're going to say, we're going to request that be varied, because that's what the ordinance says now, but it may be in conflict with, in some instances, with case law.
Any other questions from any member of the commission?
Any other questions from any members of the commission?
Yes, I'll just add that, in the instance that the county has plans to realign a right-of-way for, as an example, if we needed additional footage, the recommendation would be to not grant a variance and require the dedication. And if a property owner said that, if there's not a relationship between the thing that they're asking for and the thing that we're asking for in return, meaning if their block split didn't impose the burden on the right-of-way that created the response from the county to widen it, then we would just have to pay a fair market value. But if they're creating a development, or they're proposing a development that would require, or place a burden on that right-of-way, need additional right-of-way to accommodate a turn lane, or additional utility infrastructure, or things like that, then the county can require a right-of-way dedication or some condition, so long as it's proportional to respond to the thing being proposed.
Well, I know that in some instances, when the county's going to build a road, or anybody for that matter, except for the property owner, there, and many times, would be an increase in value of the property because of the adjacent right-of-way, or the improvements to the right-of-way. And I would assume, for the first instance, you would try to get the dedication from that. But is that a factor in condemnation?
I believe it can be, but it depends on, it depends on the facts on the ground, ultimately. So, it would take an analysis of whatever the thing is proposed. So, if we're requiring, in the abstract, if we're requiring a dedication, and it's just the fixed rule, you know, in every instance that comes in, we still have to do the analysis and see if, is it needed? If it's not needed today, then the variance process is appropriate.
Questions, comments? Does anybody want to make a motion on giving staff direction on the second bite at the apple?
Well, I do have a question, or did you have a question?
You go first.
I want to clarify what staff is requesting. So, are you proposing that if they, if a property owner requests a variance on the five-foot right-of-way, that that be an automatic?
No.
Okay.
We're saying that if they do want to make the request, then they need to meet the ordinance standard for notification. If they fail at the first meeting to do it, we want to give them one more chance. If they fail twice, then we don't want to fool them.
That's the only two strikes, and you're out.
Yeah, they can eventually come back and file again, pay another fee, or whatever we got to do. But we can see, you know, in this instance, we had one that was just simply philosophically opposed to doing anything. And so, that's good. So, he didn't do anything, he gets deferred, and he wants to, gets it, want to get it done, he can provide the adequate notice, and then he'll be good to go next month.
But it's not a matter of, you know, other variance requests, or other things that they've only got one?
We're just talking about this particular, because this will be a common theme for a while on the dedication request.
You've got two chances to get approval for a variance.
To get your notice.
For the five-foot right-of-way.
Or whatever the right-of-way dedication might be, yes.
You making that motion, Mark?
Actually, I'm sorry, I have a question. Are you done, Mark?
No, yes.
Okay. Where is this going to be written? Is this written down somewhere?
It'll be in the minutes, if y'all do it.
I just request that, I guess for future things, I have to think about stuff. And if this was known, you know, a little bit before, I'd be more comfortable with it.
Well, then do it next month.
I mean, we're not, I'm not in any hurry. I mean, I don't think the chair is in any hurry, you know? We want to consider it. And I think that what we would be talking about is that if, for some reason, the applicant came in, even after the second, say they came, say there was that second bite of the apple, and we were going to knock it off of the agenda, and they'd have to go through it again, if they came in and asked for a vote from the commission, for whatever reason, to defer it again, I'm thinking that that would be permissible under...
Yeah, see, and they may have a good justification the second time. We don't know why, or how it might be. We just don't want them to continue to be on the agenda until they ever get around to doing the right thing, you know?
I think it'd be a good idea if the staff could write, you know, what they feel like is the, you know, because my feeling is, is that you're, you know, that ought to be right, that they ought to get a second bite at the apple without having to come up and request it. But if they want a third bite at the apple, in opposition to having it drop off and have it go all over again, they do have that option to make that request, and then the commission can act on that.
Right, that's fine.
Well, I'm going to just ask another question as we're talking about it. So, how does an applicant know that? Is that going to be in your application process, say, you know, or does the staff circle back and say, "The commission has deferred you, you have one more chance," or how do we let people know?
It'll be in the minutes, and they get sent a copy of the minutes.
No, I just mean, like, say I'm applying for it.
In the future.
I'm applying for it.
Oh, in the future.
Yeah, I'm applying for mine. I need my right-of-way variance, and I didn't let my neighbors know. So, how do I know that I have one more chance, or I'll need to reapply, or what those extenuating circumstances are, give you more? So, that's what my question is.
I think the easiest thing is not to do anything. How about that? That's the best thing. Just leave it alone, and if we get somebody that's a fool enough to keep coming back, then we'll make a recommendation that they have to go off the agenda, and we don't have to fool with them. And then the planning board can...
Well, Van, I'm not opposed to it. I think that, I think it's about like...
It's too complicated, is what I'm saying. We're just, we were trying to prevent something that may not happen. So, it's just easier just to let it go.
Gotcha.
For right now, if it becomes a problem, we'll...
Yeah, I agree. If it becomes a problem, we don't want that to be a burden on staff.
That's right. We don't want to make a problem if there isn't one, so.
Well, I mean, I felt, if I can make another comment about, like, some of our items today, I felt bad for these folks who kind of knew a little bit that something was going on, but not fully. And it may not be as easy for some people to come down in the middle of the afternoon for a meeting. I mean, that's sort of, in my mind, you know, these folks are kind of not, and then the other gentleman, who didn't really understand, really. I think that was just not understanding what he needed to ask for.
Right.
So, I don't, I think, I'm not opposed to, you know, implementing an application process, or what have you. I just want to make sure we let people know, you know, listen, you need to get it done.
When they file the application, we provide them with the notice requirements and tell them what they have to do. In the one gentleman's case, he just didn't want to.
Right, right. And I don't think he understood. That's the impression I got.
Oh, he understood. He was afraid he was going to...
Lose his pants. I get it.
Well, something. I don't know what he was.
Well, lose it, they can pay for it.
Right.
If the water company wants it, they can pay for it, you know? Whoever wants it, got a plan?
Well, you know, the one thing I'm thinking, you know, in addition, well, it's along the line of Patricia's comment, is that anytime something's on the agenda, you know, if I was out there and I was opposed to it, and it was on the agenda, you know, I would be concerned about something happening. And so, you know, I'd much rather it be off the agenda, and then I know it wouldn't be taken up. So, you know, my feeling is, is that we ought to have something that lets them know that, you know, that we'll defer, but upon a deferral, if that's, if the reason for the deferral is not meant by the next meeting, that it's going to be off the agenda, so people out there won't have to say, "Well, is somebody going to sneak up and pull this up and ask for a vote on it?"
Well, if they don't make it the first time, and they come back a second time, and you, as a board, think that they're less than, or not sincere in their effort, then you can say, "We're finished with you."
Okay.
And then the people that bother to come here, that were concerned about it, will know that they're off the agenda. And if it starts again, they'll have to be notified, or whatever, in whatever way is necessary, you know?
Okay.
I think that's reasonable to say, you know, you get to consideration, and we would like to, then would we say it's a withdrawn application, and you need to reapply?
Right.
So, so we have that capacity.
That won't be, you know, official, but that'll be our practice.
If you feel like the public's being dragged along for apparent reason, it's not fair to those people that have to keep coming back for somebody that's in the clown category. Or maybe in the clown.
Well, but it's also wasting staff time. I mean, you're putting together staff reports as well, and...
You just don't want to waste time if it's not necessary, you know? And other people's time as well, I think.
Now, I'm just going to mention, I think we've got one other item after we adjourn this on accepting the minutes.
Yeah, I have one more staff communication item, whenever you're ready.
Unless any other commissioner has anything, I'm ready.
I just wanted to give you an update, which I guess was alluded to in the minutes, but our resolution to amend the ordinance, subdivision ordinance for notice, speaking of notice, failed. It failed to go forward, it failed to go backward, so it just failed. And so, there was a variety of reasons for it, but it doesn't really make any differences back to us. And so, I've been working with the judge's office and other people that are interested in it, and I think, well, we have, we have something, we can make a run at it next meeting. We'll give you a proposal as to, you know, it's not much that different than what you already looked at, but we'll have a proposal that approximates that and makes some changes in other things. And we'll see what you think. And if you're interested in doing that, then you can support it, and we'll go back to the quorum court. We don't want to go back to the quorum court again unless we got something that's worthwhile. It's just not worth it. It's not worth going back there, because it's being a waste in time, that's what that is. Because if it's, if we're not satisfied that we have a reasonable proposal for notice requirements, then we don't need to bother. If we are satisfied that we have something that's reasonable, or that may be satisfactory to the most, whoever they may be, then maybe we can make another run at it.
Do you have something, Mark?
Yes, sir. So, Van, could we get, like, an explanation of the changes, and, you know, maybe objections by the quorum court, or reasons why, I mean, just trying to figure out other human beings' motivations.
As a matter of fact, none of them worked like I thought it was going to. The vote that I was, that I understood was not the vote that happened. So, you know, it's, I won't say it's a crapshoot, but it's something like that, sometimes. If it's not slick, there's no point.
Should we be lobbying our JPs that way?
Only if, after we look at this next month, if we should be, if we come up with something everybody can agree on, that's generally a good proposal, then we'll be happy to take it to the quorum court. And for the planning board, or planning board members, they can call JPs and say, "Yeah, we've worked hard on this, and we've done it a second time, we think this is good, and we hope that you," you know, whatever. So, yeah, that's reasonable.
Let me ask this. I'm sorry, Patricia, go ahead.
I was at that meeting where it was polled, and I think the administration is against the 1,300 foot. And the, so Mr. McLendon came and talked about wanting 500. And so, that is what happened. And so, the JPs were split on their vote, six-six, with one abstaining. A lot of the people of the community actually called the quorum court, and wanted the 1,300 foot radius, so it was actually pretty close. But that, I think that's the only thing that, in my, to my understanding.
No, there were other issues that some of the JPs raised that were not directly related to that. And so, what we've done is we think we've made, and we'll have some improvements on that, to make it, to make it more palatable to even the JPs, some JPs that had some question about different things. For example, I'll give you one example. The family exclusion, the whole idea behind it is for it to be excluded, or what we call subdivision-like, to make it as easy as possible for a family member to, you know, subdivide their property in the least onerous way, and the least costly way. And the way the ordinance is written, the family exclusion is in the variance section. So, that would mean, every time somebody did a family exclusion, they would have to be doing all the notice that somebody that's doing a 40-lot subdivision would do. And that, I don't think that's what our intent was. So, that's an example, and we've got a way, we think we can fix that. So, there's a couple of things like that, in addition to that distance thing, that, but I think, you know, we'll have it specifically lined out for you, so you can look at each of those changes and decide for yourself. And it'll be easy, I think, relatively easy for you to see what you...
Will there be any coordination with what you do with the county judge?
Well, yeah. If we can do what we're proposing, that we're going to lay out, if it's something that the planning board is in general agreement with, then I think that'll be something that the administration gives up for. That's what I'm thinking, I'm hoping. So, we're trying. We're trying to get this done. So, I think it's important that we do change the notice requirement. We've always been supportive of some change. It's just a question of the way we can do it that satisfies whoever needs to be satisfied, in such a way that people get notified, and it's done in a way where it doesn't, it's not a problem, or it's not a difficulty, or a regressive effort for development. That's the thing.
And, Mr. Chairman, I did speak with several JPs, and they were fine with, like, 1,000 feet or 1,300. It was just the family exclusion thing, and the major subdivision definition. And so, I think that might be able to be changed, and I think we could get the votes.
I'll tell you what, Van, take a shot at it.
Yep.
Show us what you got, and then we can go from there, deal with it next meeting. Unless anybody else has anything, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, give it to Tommy.
He means it.
I was looking over, I heard Mark, and I saw Tommy.
He did first, and Tommy.
I'm going to put Tommy first, and Mark second.
Can I just ask one thing about the ladies? I think that that, the RFPs, as I was called?
Correct.
Have gone out?
Correct.
And 500,000 was allocated?
Correct.
Okay.
And the deadline for the companies to, or the consultants to submit their proposals are June the 13th. And then, subsequent to that date, the judge will set up whatever committee it is to review those, and that'll be that. And then, I would guess, probably around by the first of July, or certainly by the middle of July, we'll have somebody selected, I would think, unless there's an 86th proposal, which I hope there's, I hope there's an adequate number of submittals, but I don't want that happening.
On the motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we adjourned this, but now we are reconvening, not reconvening, convening the, us as the Pulaski County Board of Zoning Adjustment. And I'll acknowledge that the same members of the commission who were at the previous meeting are here, so we have a quorum. And I think the only item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, but just in case, we'll run through it real quickly. Do I have a motion on the approval of the minutes?
Moved to adjourn.
Tommy seconds, and Mark will reverse him this time. Mark made the motion, Tommy seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Don't know of any old business, don't know of any new business, don't know of any other business. Don't have any internal communications? If I did, I know I'd be outvoted. Don't have any staff communications? Here's the motion to adjourn. Patricia made that one. Who wants to second? Tommy goes second on the motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's go.
Good.
I want to acknowledge that we had a...